All this regular workshop meeting in Jacksonville City Council order. Council, you have a copy of the proposed agenda and some minutes in the consent items. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt.
So the...
Have a motion and second any further discussion. With none, all those in favor, say five percent. Aye. All opposed. And we have some, we have a public hearing here, and this is on resolution adopting a revised district maps for district elections. And I'll call on the city attorney, John Carter, to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My pleasure to be here tonight. I want to begin where many people would end. I want to begin by giving thanks. I'd like to thank the committee that you, your committee, that you appointed to work in reference to the redistricting committee. This committee has met five weekly meetings and one public input meeting. Those weekly meetings lasted approximately an hour. The public input meeting lasted about two hours. And then they're here tonight. That happened between September eighteenth, excuse me, September the eighth through tonight that these meetings have occurred. According to my calculations, your committee members have at least given a full one-eight-hour day to this cause. And we, and I know you appreciate that, too. I don't know if all have arrived yet. Some of them, as you may recall, our meeting started at 5:30 to accommodate some of the members who had work obligations. But we do expect all of them to be here tonight, and hopefully before we finish, they will be. I want to call them out because they have been very faithful to the cause that you entrusted them with. First is Mr. Ernie Wright, who will have a speaking part, too. He was selected by the committee to speak after the actual plan that will be submitted to you. Mr. Homer Spring, Mr. Kendrick Rogers, Ms. Tiffany Burgess-Choice, Mr. Glenn Hargit, Mr. Ike Johnson, and Mr. Adam Maddox. But in addition to thanking them, I want to thank your city staff. Because Mr. Wright, nor I either one could stand up here and the committee could not have done their work had it not been for the city staff that worked to help this accomplish, become accomplished. Of course, you have Carmen Miracle, Lisa Miller. And then the next group of city staff, they not only were part of the city staff working, but they also formed a subcommittee that actually met and went over the census blocks and data to form at least six options to give to this committee to consider for their deliberations. Mr. Massey, Anthony Prentz, Terrence Braxton, and Angelia Hagapien, who is our GIS analyst, and she was the expert in this area and actually gave several presentations to the committee. I want to begin where I ended with you, Council, at the last meeting that we had together. This was one of those slides. And I want to re-acclimate you to this slide and to public because I want them to understand the process that the committee went through here. The actual proposal will be presented by Mr. Wright in just a few moments, but I'm going to do some of the preface here to go over some of the details. The 2020 census came back at 72,723 persons. And these numbers here is what was represented to you as far as how the wards came out. I want to go over with them, and you will remember some of this. Ward one, well, let me go to the bottom first. If you divide the 72,723 by four, you come up with 18,180. That would be the perfect size if every one of our wards were that size. But as you recall, there's case law, et cetera, that gives authority to deviate from that number five percent, either higher or five percent lower. And that's what the two numbers at the bottom represent, and we're going to show that in a chart form here in just a moment. But the smallest award could be would be 17,271, and the largest would be 19,089. So again, using this, ward one at that time, you were representing to that ward one was over by 297 persons. That is, it's over 19,089 by 297 persons, and that's why you have 19,386. Now, anytime that I go too fast, or you don't understand, please stop me. I'm very willing to stop. I want everybody to, my council and mayor, to fully understand the process. Ward two was a very low number. We talked about that in an open session. Still grappling with that. But it came in, as you can see there, at 14,691, which is really 2,580 below the minimum size. Ward three, on the other hand, was high. It came in at the 21,129 and was therefore 2,040 over the maximum size. Ward four, Dr. Washington's ward, is the only one that ended up to be what we call imbalance. And I'll talk about the imbalance here in just a moment. After that meeting and presentation to you, when we started working with our GI expert, Angelia, she made us aware of something that had occurred downtown in 2011 when there was the redistricting occurred. There was a block that was split, and I'm going to go to that next slide and talk to you about that. Let's everyone get acclimated here on the downtown area. We have New Bridge Street, College Street. I think most of you know where Thompson Elementary School is there. You have two large wards, excuse me, two large census blocks that encompass both Ward one and Ward three. The first one is going from College Street down toward Dole Drive. Whether it's pink or blue, that is all a large census block. Below Warlick Street, excuse me, Wardola Street, all the way to Wilson Bay is another large census block that encompasses Sturgeon City and also Bay Shore Estates. The council in 2011 divided that census block, and they followed Thompson Creek. And I'm going to basically try to draw that for you right here. The committee elected to say, well, you know, we wanted to start with the wards as they exist today. So yes, we want to have the same division of those two large census blocks. Committee did not see that and does not see that as redistricting. That is just making the census blocks reflect what your wards are today. Bay Shore Estates is in Ward three. Sturgeon City, Wardola, this Court Street, there, that is in Ward one. So how does this change the numbers? It changes the numbers by moving 236 from Ward one over to Ward three. And before I go to the next slide, which will make it a little clearer, I want you to look at the bottom here, and this was created by our GIS expert, Angelia. Again, at the bottom, you'll see the minimum 17,271, that's at the left there on Ward one, maximum 19,089. That's the maximum it could be. Again, the 18,180 is where perfect is. Ward one, even with this movement, is not perfect. And actually, I'll show you in a moment, Ward one is now not 297 over. Ward one is only 61 over. On Ward three, we know it was over to begin with, but now it is over 236 more. But I want you to get from me with the graph at the bottom because that is what we're going to be talking about, the plus and the minus five. Between the minimum and the maximum, if you're in that range, you're balanced. And we want all of our wards, in fact, we don't want, all of our wards have to be balanced. Okay? Next slide. So again, dividing this downtown, two of these downtown census blocks, you now have where Ward one is still over 61. So we have to reduce Ward one by 61 persons. Ward two is still under, doesn't touch it, it still needs 2,580 persons to become in balance, at least. Ward three is now over 2,276. And Ward four, of course, no one touched it, it is in balance. Excuse me. Okay. Let's talk about the principles, the legal principles here. The first one is that in doing a redistricting, you must, it's not an option, you must use the 2020 census block data only. Now, this young lady walking in is Angelia. She's our GIS expert, and we appreciate her being with us tonight. You have to use that number. We have reason to believe that there was an undercount in Ward two in certain areas, but it doesn't matter. We have to use the numbers that have been given to us. Redistricting is totally based upon population. Population is your census population. That is the child that was just born and is counted on the census records. Or it may be the senior citizens about to take their last breath but still was counted on the census. Anyone in between there, not voters, not registered voters, not people who go to the polls and vote. It is by population, and that is exactly, is purely population-based, in accordance with the guidelines that I'm going to cover in just a moment. Those guidelines are about the compactness, contiguous, and so forth, and I'm going to go over those individually here in just a moment for you. And we've already talked about the plus five and the minus five. And again, between those two numbers that I've given you previously, that is the number of 17,271 and 19,089, that you're in balance. You're okay. That ward is okay. And we'll get to those there. And again, that's what the substantial equality term talks about, that is, the balancing These are redistricting guidelines. These are legal principles and guidelines that have been developed by case law and by statute and have become principles that are applied. I want to say upfront that the guidelines, these are guidelines that are applicable to municipal and local redistricting. Some of these guidelines do not apply to state redistricting. I know you've all been keeping up with the news. The state has now got maps that they're ready to push out. Their requirement for a public hearing and public input session is totally different from ours. And I have attended at least three or four webinars on it, and that brown folder there is part of my file on this. But one of the things I learned, and I didn't know, was that when the legislature redistricts and draws their particular legislative, they have to be pretty much down to equal person, you know? If you have 100 here, you have to have 100 here, et cetera, et cetera. They don't have the ability to do the five-plus or the five-minus percent that we do in accordance with the law. And again, that was something that I learned, at least was taught through one of those webinars. The first principle is compactness. And this is one I like to demonstrate by talking about a ball of dough. If I had a ball of dough here, and I compacted it together, and it was round, and I put it in the oven, then again, that's very compact. It's circular, it's round, it's compact. But I could also take that ball of dough, and I could make it into a baguette, which is a French, long, narrow loaf of bread. You've seen them at all your grocery stores. And it's 12, 14 inches long. Again, it is not, therefore, as compact as the round ball of dough was before. I could do a third thing. I could take that baguette, and I could make it serpentine. It even becomes more not compact. And if you follow any of the lawsuits that have occurred in this state at least, and I'm sure others, this is what gives courts challenges and problems, these serpentine districts that are drawn. Again, one of the basic principles is that it needs to be compact. And I can assure you that what this committee has done, first of all, they have considered all seven of these guidelines, but they have done nothing to affect the compactness of the four wards that exist in the city of Jacksonville. The second one is meaning is contiguous. The law defines what contiguous is. My two hands pretend for the moment that they're not connected to my body. If I hold them like this, there's a separation between them, and we would say, hey, they're not contiguous. But if these two hands represent Ward A, and between Ward A here and Ward A here, you have a river, you have a road, or whatever, in the eyes of the law, they're still contiguous. Contiguous is defined that way. Now, if it's separated by another ward, and there's no way that, again, hands are free-floating, not connected to my body, but if separated by a ward and do not touch each other, then they're not contiguous. They have to either be contiguous because they're only separated by a body of water, a river, for example, or a road. So contiguous is important, and it's one of those things you have to watch as you go Preserve communities of interest. Well, I think the first thing that comes through all of our minds when we talk about communities of interest is our neighborhoods. That's the community of interest. And the committee, your committee, certainly looked at that and so forth. But actually, y'all have taught us something, and that is that our wards are communities of interest. I cannot, in the last few decades that I've been here, can see the many times that a council member would look down the dais and say, well, council member so-and-so, this is in your ward, give me your thoughts on this. Wards are communities of interest. We've seen it on Town Center, we've seen it on Commons Property being, y'all look because there are communities of interest there. The town of Cary actually has some printed redistricting guidelines on their page, webpage. And for 2021 redistricting, the first one they put up, and I will quote it, it says, "Use existing," and they call it districts instead of wards, "use existing district boundaries as the starting point for making changes to new council district boundaries." End quote. Well, your committee, trying to follow preserving communities of interest, began with that very principle, except they would rewrite it as follows. "Use existing ward boundaries as the starting point for making changes to new council ward boundaries." Again, preserving communities of interest. Minimize the split of census blocks. Well, I've already told you, the census block downtown was split in 2011, and we're going to ask you tonight, as part of the resolution, that you split it again to make sure that it appears the same. There are going to, in the presentation that Mr. Wright will present to you, there in the balancing of wards one and four, there is no split of any census blocks to make that accomplished. However, in the balancing of wards two and three, there was a split of a huge census block. But again, I think you'll understand why the committee decided to do this, and again, I think that will become evident to you. But we try to minimize that, and that has been attempted here to minimize it as far as the splitting of census blocks. Minimize split election precincts. This is probably the least one that the committee thought even considered. We learned something very, and you may have known this, I didn't. Did you know that in the city of Jacksonville, in city precincts, the county residents come into the city and vote? That is their assigned precinct. Didn't know that. We knew from the beginning that it was going to be impossible to align wards with precincts. And especially not only that factor, but the factor that with the early voting that we've all become so accustomed to, that if I go into the Board of Elections, whether it's in Georgetown or at the Commons, and say, I'm here, they're going to know my address so they can give me the right ballot. Again, early voting is for everyone in the city. So again, this was, those considerations was not considered that much, but it is one of those things that is listed as a guideline to try to minimize that there. Now, the next one's an important one, and I can assure you that your committee is not pairing any incumbents against each other. In fact, this one is actually established by the United States Supreme Court. I will give you the link or the site. It's Bush versus Vera, V E R A, and it's a 1996 U.S. Supreme Court decision. The United States Supreme Court recognized that, quote, "Incumbency protection, at least in the limited form of avoiding contest between incumbents, is a legitimate state goal. Expecting incumbent members of a city, a county, or school governing board not to look out for their own interest is asking too much. It is fully defensible to make every effort to ensure that after redistricting, no two incumbents share a district." I can assure you, your committee did not put any two incumbents against each other here. Now, the next one is an important. In 2011, the resolution that was passed, the committee at that time asked and the council approved. They wanted future growth to be, if at all possible, in wards two and three, because that's where they saw future growth. That's where we see future growth today, I think, after you look at the ward maps from Mr. Wright gets up here. At that time, that line is drawn by that resolution was this line. Follow Henderson Drive until it gets to Western. Keep going over Western between the First Bank and the Longhorn Steakhouse, and just keep going straight on up to Ramsey Road. That was the line that the council at that time in 2011 adopted as anything to the right of that goes into Ward two, anything to the left of that goes into Ward three. Tonight, when Mr. Wright gets up here in just a moment, he's going to actually show you a picture, a picture of a slide that I took after I got my direction from the committee as to exactly how they wanted you to have future growth. And again, there's a red line on that slide, and I want you to see the same slide that the committee saw. And Mr. Massey, and Carmen, and I have verbalized that and put that in your resolution that is before you tonight. That is, to beyond that line over to the right would be growth that goes into Ward two, and to the right of that would be growth that would go into Ward three. Again, that will be pointed out to you when Mr. Wright comes up in a moment. And speaking of that, it is about time for Mr. Wright to come up. Let me just say this about, Mr. Wright was selected by your committee to come up and to make the presentation of the actual plan. It is their plan, it's not my plan. I just was the facilitator and tried to help them any way I could, as well as, again, we couldn't have done it without your city staff. But Mr. Wright, whether you know this or not, this is his third redistricting committee. So it's not only the trust that y'all put into him as a council, but there were two other councils 10, 20 years ago who put their trust in him, too, to sit on the committee and to help draw these wards in accordance with the law and the guidelines. And they said, Mr. Wright, you need to present this to the council. And without further ado, Mr. Ernie Wright.
And you want me to click it? You tell me when to click, I will.
Please, John. Thank you, John. Good evening to the council. This is, I feel like an old veteran here. I want to say, first of all, thank you for appointing a wonderful committee. We had some great people. John mentioned their names, I'll mention them again. Glenn Hargit, Kendrick Rogers, Tiffany Choice, Ike Johnson, Adam Maddox, Homer Springs. And the staff was tremendous. And John named all of them, and they were just wonderful. This is my third go-around. The main thing we looked at, and I want to make sure the council, and I want to thank the council, too, again, for appointing us, but the main thing that we looked at is, number one, population. In other words, there is no, we didn't look at partisanship, we didn't look at, we didn't look at, we looked at population. We were trusted by the council to be neutral, detached, and fair as a committee. And that's what we intend to be. And we also looked at the redistricting guidelines. John cited case law. I'll just tell the council that, basically, in our constitution, there's a thing called equal protection, which everybody has heard of. And that's where redistricting comes from. It comes from population. As John stated, a newborn versus a voting adult, they're both considered the same for purposes of population. So you don't take into account, oh, I got more voters over here than I got over here in this ward. You don't do that. You look strictly at population, and that's what we did. Okay? Now, the slides I'm going to show you, there are several slides, but we recommended wards one and four slides, and I will show you that momentarily. I think it's up here now. And then wards two and three slides. This is what the committee unanimously voted. Committee used, on the slide you have in front of you, there's a red line going down. And let me, let me say, having been on the redistricting committee for 30 years, you've seen Jacksonville grow. For example, we didn't have Western Extension 20 years ago. We barely got it 10 years ago. So you had to make, you have to look at future growth, which I'm going to get into a little bit later, because that's something I want the council to consider. In our deliberations, we considered future growth. But getting to this slide, slide one and four, the committee used Wilson Boulevard, and we didn't have Wilson Boulevard 10 years ago. To put Terra Terrace Two, I don't have a pointer or anything, and Heroes Manor, I can point to it. You can see it up here, Terra Terrace Two and Heroes Manor. We wanted to put those in Ward four and take Paradise Point and put Paradise Point in Ward one. And someone says, well, why are you going to do that? Why are you switching all this around? Things of that nature, particularly if Ward four was okay on the minimum-maximum. Well, one of the committee members, and committee member Spring brought up a good point. If you were on base and you said, where am I voting? What's my ward? What's my precinct? All you got to do is look at Wilson Boulevard, and to the left of Wilson Boulevard is, you vote in Ward one. To the right of Wilson Boulevard, you vote in Ward four. So clearly, you know where you're going to vote. And that's why we selected and we put Paradise Point, for example, is in Ward one, and Heroes Manor and Terra Terrace is in Ward two. And by doing that, if you look at the minimum-maximum in it, we're still balanced, we're population-balanced. We're not really changing too much, and the Supreme Court has allowed a five percent variant either way. And so we're still within that five percent of each. And our whole goal in looking at this particular approach was to try to get an equal population in each ward as close as we could. So we figure if it's within five percent, that you're not going to get a perfect 18,000, I think whatever the number was, you're not going to get that. So we wanted to get the five percent balance, which we have. You got Ward one and Ward four, and you take some out of Ward one, which we took 1,382 votes from that, and we added that to Ward four. And it is balanced according to us, and we thought that that was fair. Once again, population only. And remember the guidelines. The wards must be compact. Compact basically means living near one another, if at all possible. And so if you look at Ward one and Paradise Point and things of that nature, it is compact. Contiguous, physically adjacent. The Ward one and Ward four, they are contiguous. They're adjacent to one another. The preserving the community interests, the neighborhood, they are neighborhoods. You got Heroes Manor in the neighborhood, you got Terra Terrace neighborhood, you got Paradise Point, you know, neighborhood. So we decided to keep that together. And basically, we thought that this, as far as being equal, was the best, best way to look at it. And so using that approach, accepting this, no census blocks are divided, and there's, as I stated earlier, an easy explanation if someone questions what ward they're in. You know, the answer is just tell them which side of Western, I mean, Wilson Boulevard do you live? And that's the ward that you're in. So wards one and four are balanced, as shown by the graphs, and that's why we selected it. Are there any questions with regard to selecting that option, council persons? I'm sorry. Okay? Wards two and three. And one thing interesting, I wanted to point out, John, we can go back to wards. You know, one of the things are, you know, remember we said contiguous? That is physically adjacent or touching. The reason we didn't go, and a lot of people ask, well, you went one and four, why didn't you go one and two? Why didn't you do? It's because one and two, according to that map, are not contiguous. It's because 1 and 2, according to that map, are not contiguous. You don't see the pink and the green touching anywhere on the map. So that's why we didn't go, we didn't consider 1 and 2. But we considered 1 and 4 because they're divided by Wilson Boulevard. They are contiguous, and they do have neighborhoods. So going to the next slide, 2 and 3 slide, the committee used an unnamed creek that flows off of Moon Creek, Half Moon Creek, I'm sorry, Half Moon Creek, to divide the wards, allowing Carolina Forest and everything to the right of Carolina Forest to go into Ward 2, and everything to the left of the unnamed creek to go into Ward 3. The committee, the committee looked at it, and we said, just like we did last time in 2000, in 2011, when I was here, and now, 2021. This is future growth. This is, we're looking for future growth. And that's why we decided on this example, or this site, look at the population impact. Ward 2 needed some people, so we had to add some people into Ward 2, but we had to take some people out of Ward 3 to balance it. Look how close Ward 2 and Ward 3 are. I mean, I would say probably, what, 300, 400 votes? They're close. And that's, once again, what we were seeking. We were seeking to have wards equal in size. So you remember back in the day, and some people may disagree, but you remember West Northwoods used to control who would sit on city council, because they were the largest ward. They had the most people, they, this, that, and the other. Now, if you look at this, these are, you've got Ward 2 and Ward 3 that are pretty much equal, along with the other wards, where we have the 5% deviation. Now, once again, let's go to compactness. As you can see, Ward 3 is compacted. They have, they're balanced, and, John, you can tell me which neighborhoods are in it, but I know there are neighborhoods, Windburg Parkway, which means Carolina Forest, is in Ward 3.
Yes, North Carolina Forest is in Ward 2.
I'm sorry, Ward 2.
And then the new development coming on, the Vineyards, is in Ward 3.
Right.
And so forth.
So you have community interests that's preserved, and they are contiguous, they touch. 2 and 3 touch. That's why we dealt with them together. They're compact. We did leave an area that is unmarked, where you can see the Palisades of Jacksonville. I think that's the area that we left for future growth.
Well, that's in, that is in Ward 3, if the council adopts it.
It's in Ward 3, but we're looking at growth.
I'm going to show the next one for that.
In that area, okay.
This one.
Right. You can see it better there, that area. The committee thought, as it was done in 2011, redistricting, that a line could be drawn to give guidance to which wards future growth would go in. And actually, this map shows the red line drawn, it was drawn during our committee meeting and received unanimous approval from the entire committee. And that's that red line that comes down, and it actually, it basically follows the unnamed creek and Half Moon Creek, allowing everything to the right of the red line to go into Ward 2, and everything to the left of the red line to go into Ward 3. And it was verbalized in the rest of the, in the resolution that this map gives guidance to the clerk and the attorney for future annexes. In other words, what we're saying is, we know Jacksonville is going to grow and going to expand. And what we're trying to put in place is a plan that will allow growth to occur orderly, and that's why we drew the map that way. And it's strictly for future growth, which, one of the redistricting guidelines, aside from compactness, being contiguous, preserving community interest, minimizing census block splits, avoid pairing incumbents, which we didn't do, the last factor is to consider future growth. And that's why we selected this option for Wards 2 and 3. And we're asking the city council to accept the two options that we have presented, one involving 1 and 4, and the other one involving 2 and 3. That, I'm sorry. One other thing, you know, John, John gets me up here, and I get, you know, I get elected by the other committee members. I'm not told anything, I'm not, you know, it's just like, "You've been here before, so handle it." That is the map that we're asking city council to approve, which is a combination of everything that I just went over. The 1 and 4, Wards 1 and 4 slide that you saw, Wards 2 and 3 slides that you saw, the future growth slide that you saw. This is the map that we're asking city council to approve, and it would be, as the census is, in effect for the next 10 years. By law, that's where we get our numbers, and, once again, census counts babies and it counts voters. So we went strictly by population. We do not believe in other factors. And I am proud that our committee was independent, was fair, was neutral, detached, and we kept race and politics out of it. This is strictly population. And that's the end of my presentation. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy. We're asking city council to approve the ward boundaries, and this is the committee's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor and council, if there's no questions at this time, it's an opportune time for you, Mr. Mayor, to recess the hearing and, excuse me, and have a public hearing and hear from the citizens who may have come to speak on this point, and then we'll pick up after that.
One other thing before, John, before, I just wanted the city council to remember that this is, this involves the city of Jacksonville, doesn't involve, you know, and parts of the base and things of that nature. But I want to make sure that you understand that we're taking into account future growth and everything in this, and we ask that you approve it. And who knows? Maybe I'll be on it 40 years.
That's the end of your council meeting, open up the public hearing on this matter. And I would ask for anyone that wishes to speak, please indicate by raising your hand. If you would, please state your name and address to the, for the clerk.
Mr. Mayor, may I take the mask off?
Please do.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Joel McGlaughlin, resident 2010 Hampshire, Councilman Bittner's ward. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. 12 years ago, our Attorney General Eric Holder challenged us as Americans to have an honest conversation about race in our country. I challenge us to do that tonight. The ward system in Jacksonville has maintained for over 20 years and plans to keep for another 10 a ward system that discriminates on the basis of race. They are based on the odious assumption the people of Jacksonville are simply too racist to elect a person that is not white to the council. As a result, the ward maps recommended by past and the current redistricting committee abused the population of Camp Lejeune and attached it to two wards containing historically minority neighborhoods. These wards were drawn with surgical precision, not by white supremacists, but by partisan Democrats. The result for over 20 years has been a form of political apartheid that makes votes in Northwoods worth much less than a vote in New River. When now Senator Lazar ran for reelection two years ago, he garnered 1,041 votes, and he was unopposed, to win. Across town, the candidate in Ward 4 was elected with only 110 votes. And this disparity has occurred in every election, go back 10, 15 years. On one side, where I live in Bryn Mawr, last time Commissioner, Councilman Bittner was up, he had to have 300, where across town, maybe it was a 100. So a persistent pattern of lack of equal protection, in my judgment. There was a time in Jacksonville when some people counted as 3/5th of a vote. Why today should that person count only 1/9th? That's the difference between Mike Lazar's total and the vote total across town. The premise that the people of Jacksonville will not vote for a non-white council member has proved false ever since the city embraced the current wards in 1994. My colleague, Ernie Wright, in 1996, a former Marine, local attorney, was elected to the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, at large, countywide, second highest vote getter, if I recall. Since then, candidates such as Margaret Brown, Bill Leneer, and Melissa Oakley, Judges Paul Hardison, Carol Jones, have been elected repeatedly by the citizens that you might accuse of racism. Just last year, the top vote getter for county commissioner was Robin Knapp, an Asian American. Tequina Labriado, an African American and registered Democrat, registered Democrat, was the top vote getter in East Northwoods and Bryn Mawr in the school board race. Please, please, don't perpetuate the divisive lie that the patriots of Jacksonville will not vote for a council member who is not white. Instead, I encourage you to go back to the drawing board. You each should have received a copy of what I'm calling the Semper Fi Fair Election Plan, and it looks like this. Semper Fi Fair Election Plan. It's very simple, and I didn't draw the maps outside the base. All this does, it divides Camp Lejeune into four wards, split the pie kind of equally, 7,000 plus, split the base population into four wards, and then however the map gets drawn into Jacksonville, I don't care. I just want a level playing field so that on one side of town, there is not an unfair advantage. The proposed Semper Fi Fair Plan spreads the 31,000 base population not across two racially gerrymandered wards, but rather all four wards. The map shows you what that could look like. And this map, Mayor Phillips, this map I made in an hour and a half in Raleigh last Wednesday with the benefit of the legislature staff in Raleigh. To finish the map to the north, to go to the rest of the city, this is not a matter of weeks, it's maybe a matter of days. It's as easy as clicking and pointing a ward block and stitching them together. And I'm quite sure that your very competent city staff could extend north from the base perimeter, go north into the city outlying areas in a matter of a day or two. And to finish these maps, only a couple of days, not weeks. You have the time to get this right. You have the time to get this right. And subject to your questions, that's what I had to say today, and I appreciate this time to come before you.
Thank you.
Speakers. Anyone else? One else wants to speak to this matter? Close the podium for this matter and reconvene to regular council meeting. I want to thank everyone that served on the committee, that helped to put this information together, and also want to thank all that have contributed and given input. By the way, Mr. Carter, when is the date of execution of a decision by us?
Going to cover this, something's already folded up there, how about that? But the committee did their best, meeting weekly, to get it to you tonight because there is a difference. If the council approves the resolution that is before you tonight, then this information has to get to the Board of Elections, that we have a plan by November 12th, and actually has to be submitted then by November the 17th. If that occurs, and the filing period would be from December the 6th at noon to December the 17th at noon. According to my calculation, is it was going to be 10, 11 days there. If, however, the council elects to send my committee back to the drawing board to consider other options, then we, you have to, council, get this to the Board of Elections by December the 17th, 2021. We have to let them know the plan. That is the drop dead date. If that happens, your filing period, as you can tell, is not December 6th to the 17th, because those days have passed. It would be from January 3rd at noon to January 7th at noon. That would give a filing period of approximately four days. Again, one of the considerations that the committee wanted to give was to offer to you their proposed resolution, their proposed redistricting, so that all citizens in the city of Jacksonville would have this extended period of time in which to file, if they're so interested in running for office. The five seats are actually going to be up for some period of time, whether it's a four-year period, or what remains on it, or a one year, as Mr. Sosa would be looking at, he'd have to refile again, we talked about, next year. But that's it. Now, I want to say also, I understood from Mr. Bittner and Mr. Sosa that the Board of Elections page is incorrect, because they're saying the filing period is January the 3rd, and we will call them in the morning. If you pass the resolution, and make sure that they get that correct, as far as the filing period being December the 6th through the 17th. If you don't, then their page is correct. Any questions?
Questions of Mr. Carter? Counsel? I believe that he's looking for, they're looking for action on this.
Mayor Phillips and council, I make the motion to adopt the resolution with the new ward district plans and to authorize the filing with the Board of Directors as set forth by the redistricting committee.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Have one last slide that I'll go back to, Mayor and council, and that is, your action tonight, your wards are imbalanced. This would be the numbers in each ward, as you see, Ward 1, 17,768, Ward 2, 18,226, Ward 3, 17,830, and Ward 4, 18,899. Again, between the minimum and maximum number there, so they are imbalanced, and that is in compliance with the law. Thank you. If any other questions, let me know. We'll call the Board of Elections tomorrow, too, to make sure that's corrected.
Mayor, if I may make one comment. There is no question in the staff's mind that the census was undercounted. And I want the public and you to know that now that you have made a decision on redistricting, the staff efforts will now begin to look at the census numbers themselves and develop the necessary strategy to challenge the census data. If we're successful in challenging that number of 72,723, it will have absolutely no impact on the action that you've taken tonight. You're required by law to act on the number that was published. We can tell you from data that we have already looked at in the housing complexes in Ward 2, that there was substantial undercount. We can tell you from data which we have already received from the base, that there was substantial undercount there. What I want everybody to understand, though, is challenging the number of 72,723 will have no impact or in any way require you, or even allow you, to redraw the district boundaries that you have just adopted. Why is it important for us to challenge that? Well, it comes down to money. Well, it comes down to money. We believe that the actual population of Jacksonville is 78,000-plus. We can document that based upon houses that were built, the occupancy load, the fact that you know as well as we do there are very few vacant apartments in this community. And that's not any different than it was last year when the census was actually accomplished. But the reason why I'm making this statement is so that you and the public will understand the comments that I just made. Staff will concentrate on this over the next three to four months, and we will continue to bring you reports. Do you have any questions on what I've said?
Questions, counsel?
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to the next agenda item here for the night, and this is the designation of voting and alternate voting delegates for the National League of Cities Virtual City. Nominations?
Phillips, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Washington as our delegate and Councilmember Jackson as our alternate.
Second? Any additional nominees? All those in favor signify I'm saying aye. All opposed? Okay. Good luck. Make us look good. All right, so item number nine tonight is FY23 major budget topic, and this is a services agreement for our computer software.
Good evening. Terrence Braxton, our interim IT director, is going to present the slides. We would remind you that last week, or rather, the last council meeting, we identified a number of major budget topics that we will be briefing you on. The first budget topic was last meeting, and it talked about whatever it talked about. To be honest with you, I've forgotten what it talked about. But tonight, we are talking about one of the major issues that you're going to face. Terrence is going to show you information, give you a status report. Because it's a service contract, we are not asking you to do anything. On the other hand, because we're talking about potentially spending major money, we are going to be asking you at the end to concur on the approach. So it's not provided for your information only. We feel that while it's within the jurisdiction of the city manager to sign this contract, that without your understanding of what we're doing and why we're doing it, that would be very poor management because of the financial implications that Terrence is going to talk to you about. Terrence, please.
Thanks, Dr. Woodruff. Good evening, mayor, counsel. This evening, I will give you an update on the computer replacement software and the service agreement associated with it. Earlier this year, you were briefed on the need for a replacement system, a software system that was first purchased back in 1995 and is continuing to be used today as the backbone of our city operation. Our finance department, our financial system is using it heavily, and we have other departments that are tied in by interfaces and support of this Jax400 system. In order to properly replace the software system, we requested and was approved for a budget of $250,000 for a consultant service. This consultant service will come in, review our business process, conduct software analysis, and then help us identify a software solution based off the results of our business process review. Once conclusion of this software, of this consultant services, in FY23, we will start the process of purchasing and implementing this system. This will continue into FY24 and potentially into other fiscal years. Right now, we don't know the cost of this system, but we know that it will cost us a few million dollars. The next couple of slides, we'll talk about the approach that we want to take with this project. Our goal with this approach is to provide councilmen with updates, periodic updates, as we go along with this project. Our first task has been completed. The budget has been approved for funding for a consultant service. Our second task, we will talk about it more in detail in a couple of slides. But as for the rest of this project approach, what we plan on doing is, again, doing that business process review, do an RFP process, identify vendors for our software solution, go through the procurement process, and as well, then go into our implementation. Our focus tonight will be on Task 2, our internal and external professional assistance. There's a couple of items in Task 2 that we've already completed. One of the tasks that we've done was we created an internal staff of core team members to look at, interview, and decide which consultant service that we want to have as a service contract. That team consists of, as noted, CMO, ITS, finance, and legal. Another item we've completed is we conducted research with other municipalities on their process as they also implemented new software systems, the goals that they had, the pros and cons, and get feedback from them on how that process is going. One of the things that our team looked at was a key factor for us, as we did, our pros and cons, was having an individual consultant come in. Someone that doesn't represent a vendor, someone that could come in, give us an unbiased look at where our current state is, and help us find a vendor with the software that leads us into our future state for the city. As a result, we chose Cherry Becker. Now, this name might sound familiar because Cherry Becker is currently our auditors and have been our auditors for the last two years, two fiscal years. Our finance director, Gil, speaks highly of them. One of the things that we have also with them is that their IT services is independent from their auditing service. So there is no conflict of interest between the advisory service that they provide as well as the auditory service that they currently provide as well with the city. It may, our initial team, our core team, met with Jim Holloman, who's the digital advisory director over at Cherry Becker, and he provided us a brief of their services that they have available to them. We also talked to him about what we're looking for as a consultant service. So we had a good one-on-one conversation, and we also was able to lay out what we're looking for as well. In September of this year, a couple of representatives from Cherry Becker came on site and had a brief with our department directors, as well as some of their staff members, on the objectives of this project and what do they offer as a consultant service. They also did individual one-on-one consultant services with, or meetings with those department directors, getting the idea of what their functionality and capabilities are, and then looking at what their future state wanted to be as well. It was well-received, and the directors appreciated it. So why did we choose Cherry Becker? It met one of our key factors, our key factor of being an independent consultant. We wanted somebody to come in, look at our process, help us find a vendor, and they have no stake in the game as to which vendor we select. There's no money to them or no compensation to them for whatever vendor that we select. They're familiar with the city as being our auditors. And what they also bring is a dedicated team who's going to be with us for the next six to seven months, and they have experience in the IT field, as well as some city management who are working with us. So what is our objectives in this project? One of the things that's going to happen is they're going to come in and do a review of our IT department, look at our organization and how we're structured, look how we do business. At the same time, they're going to come in and do a business process review with the other departments. They're going to go ahead and do an assessment to make determination what is required for them as well. We would do a software evaluation and identification, and they will help us design and submit our RFP. The results of this will help us have an improved business process and capabilities. It will help us modernize our current technology, get us out of a 20th-century software system and into a 21st-century solution, and then to meet the council goals of the three Es: effective, efficient, and economical. The service contract, as stated before, there's no bidding process to this. We don't have to conduct a RFP. Cherry Becker will come in, is contracted with us, and is requesting a fixed fee milestone contract at the cost of $259,100. As stated before, we've been budgeted for $250,000. So we will have to do a budget amendment to offset the cost of that service. What we're requesting tonight is the council to look at our two options. Option 1, concurrent recommended approach with our approach with Cherry Becker. Or option 2, direct our CMO to analyze and bring back other approaches. Any questions?
Question. What's been the experience of this proposed firm in North Carolina?
Currently, they have worked with other municipalities here in North Carolina. I don't have the statistics or the information as to which municipalities they have worked with, but they have worked with the state of Virginia, the state of North Carolina, and the state of Florida.
Have we discussed their performance with some of these municipalities?
We have not discussed that.
We can get you the list. If I remember correctly, there is a combination of larger, such as Charlotte, and smaller, and we can get that list to you. Actually, while we're doing some other business, I can run upstairs and get there. I should have brought that with me.
Maybe I didn't explain myself. I'm not looking for a list, I'm just looking for the fact that how has their performance been evaluated by people who have used their services?
Okay. Our understanding is that almost in every case, they are also the auditors. So what we'll need to do is verify for you that those services have been acceptable and that they continue with the audit. Because I think that tells you whether people have been satisfied with their consulting services for software is once the software study was over, did they keep the auditing firm? But we will get that information, our apology.
So am I to understand you do not have a signed contract with Cherry Becker yet?
No, sir.
We do not have a signed contract yet, sir.
And let me test that again. We could have signed that. I think from the manager's standpoint, that's not the way to keep you informed. As Terrence has said, you're going to face, as you prepare your FY23 budget, you're going to face a multimillion-dollar project. And we don't want you to say, oh, well, how did you get there without us knowing? So what we're saying to you tonight is, you had the money and the budget to do the study. We've now identified the firm, and this is why we'd like to use this firm. Are you comfortable with that? And then, as we move through the process, you will begin to see numbers, as Terrence said, probably, you know, using my fingers, and two, three, four, five, probably by the end of April, you're going to begin to see some financial numbers that really are big numbers. Now, I also want to prepare you for this. When Chief Huneira stood in front of you and talked about the CAD and RMS system and told you it was going to cost $2 or $3 million, he was able to bring to you money on the table from other areas. Unfortunately, there is no money on any table from any other areas. When you move forward with this program, every penny of it is going to come from the taxpayer here. And that's why we feel it's important for you to, at this stage, to feel comfortable with Cherry Becker. So instead of asking you tonight to concur, I think Mr. Bittner's asked an important question that we don't have the answer for. So if it's acceptable to you, we will push asking your concurrence until November 16th. And between now and then, we will give you the list of other clients, and we will do the background check to make sure they were comfortable. Is that an acceptable approach?
I have a question, though. So can you give us, I guess you did probably in the presentation, but what is the end product we're receiving from them for this contract? Is it the RFP or what?
So there's three things that we're getting with this contract. We're getting a business process review.
Right, okay.
We're also getting a software identification and evaluation. So they're going to come in and let us know, based off our business practice review or the assessment, which company or which vendor is best for us in the software that we are going to need. And then from that, they help us in supporting our RFP so we can put that RFP together and submit it and get our appropriate vendor.
So they're going to hopefully identify who we want to use and tell them exactly what we need?
Right.
Is that what?
And what they'll also do is identify programs or parts of the system that we don't use.
Exactly.
Correct?
Yes.
Be able to eliminate those.
And that's a part of the process, where they'll come in and do their assessments and talk into those departments and see what their need, what they currently have, and then what they're going to need for future.
When you receive your bids, your quotes for the RFP, will they help you analyze the quotes and help you make a decision?
That's all on for the city. So what they're going to do is just give us the data, give us the information, and then it's up to us, us as a city, to determine which vendor we want to choose.
So really, once they give you input to what goes in the RFP, they're done?
Right.
Redaction by this organization?
Yeah, I'm almost surprised. I would have thought they would perhaps be more involved and help evaluate. I mean, it's not every day that you get to evaluate RFP quotes. And I think you need an expert to help you, that consultant, to help you figure out what all that's in that thing.
Well, what they're going to do is they're going to score each of those vendors. So that's the help that they'll provide to us. Based off of what our requirement is, that assessment is, they'll take that and say, okay, these are the scores for each of these vendors. And at that time, we decide on, based off that score, which vendor we want to choose.
The score after you get their quotes back in, the vendor's quotes back in.
Yeah, so the bidder's responses to their ability to meet our requirements, you know.
Yeah, they will let us know. I mean, certainly the computer is up. I'm still using the blanket and the fire, as y'all know. There will be a list, and let's say it has 100 points on it. Cherry Becker will grade each of the responses to say, out of those 100 points, how many of them did they meet? But they've been very clear, they will not recommend. What they will do is they will say, and I'm just going to make up numbers, that you got five responses, this response scored 92, this response scored 88, this response scored 73, and so forth. Beyond that, they say to the city, it's on you. You have to decide. But yes, they are going to walk us to the point of making the decision.
I wanted to know. And that's what I was hoping they would be willing to do, so.
Well, they'll be contractually required to do.
Okay.
Question. For the benefit of our TV audience, and my benefit as well, what problems have we experienced that have brought us to this point?
With our current software system?
Yes.
Well, I would say one is support that we're getting from our vendor right now. Again, like I said, this system has been in place since 1995. It's old, it's coming out of life, end of life. The interfaces between other departments makes it difficult, as an example. You know, with HR, trying to submit something or add new employees requires multiple steps prior to getting into the software system. So we want something that's seamless, where it takes, you put in the input, and it goes through one input, one interface, and into the system. And that's what we don't have right now with the system that we have.
Let me give you another example. The, you know, it's important when we come up with a new software need, such as the 3-1-1 system for turning in work orders. That software was developed, let's say, in 2016. It doesn't interface with a lot of our other systems. Why? Because they were designed in 1995 or 2001. Think of it this way. At one point, you bought a brand-new car, and you bought it in 1995. Well, over time, you've needed new windshield wipers. And over time, you've needed a new seat cover. And over time, you've needed, you've needed, you've needed. Well, in automobiles, it's pretty easy still to go across the street and get a pair of windshield wipers, and they'll fit. What's the problem with computers is this. They're not cars. What happens is, the more software that we buy that... What happens is, the more software that we buy that gives us more technology, that software has got to work on our hardware, and it's got to have, he uses the fancy word "interface." I'm going to use a simple word. It has to work. It has to work with our other software packages. The most important thing, though, is what Terrence mentioned at the beginning. We've been notified, folks, we're not going to give you any more upgrades. And if you want us to continue to service, the service contracts are going to go up. Why is that? Well, unlike a good auto mechanic, auto mechanics can work on anything, from Mr. Bittner's brand-new Ford F-150 to someone else's 1934 Ford. And yes, they did make '34 Fords. In the software hardware business, no. This younger generation that's now running all of these systems, they have no clue about some of the things that we are actually running today. Because their education is all on the new system. So that, that was a long and laborious explanation, but it really just comes down to this. Our system has lasted, and you've gotten good money out of it. It's now time for us to be preparing for the next 15 to 20 years.
How much does a system like that cost? I mean, millions, we're talking 5 million or 20 million?
No, no, thank goodness not 20 million. We would guess, and this is just a swag, you're probably going to be talking somewhere around $3 million. Maybe a little low, maybe a little high. And one of the things we'll have to do is bring, when we get to that point in the budget, we will have to bring back to you a funding plan.
Is that something that, that you can borrow on? I mean, it's not, it's an asset, but it's not something that, that probably a bank or a finance company is interested in owning if, if we default on it.
Well, what we were thinking was, we would be asking each council member to loan us a certain amount of money to cover this.
Some, some can loan more than others, I can assure you. And if you'd like, I'll tell you who's.
The project is doomed with failure.
No, one of the, you know, from... Ladies and gentlemen, at the end of the previous session, we had a city employee who had a minor medical matter. I can report to you that employee is just fine, and at this time, we're ready to continue the meeting. Mayor?
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. We'll be thinking about it, make sure he's okay. What I've come, come up here for tonight, and I'm not used to standing on this side of the leash down from the dice, but I wanted to, some of you have already got the email, but the city of Jacksonville closed a deal on some property for recreation purposes. It's approximately four, plus or minus 400 acres. And again, you know, for recreational purposes. Now, what we've got facing us now is planning for the recreation for future Jacksonville. Again, we bought this property down in Williamsburg, in the Williamsburg development, and again, we paid $2.4 million for the property, and its tax value is at $2.6 million. So what is the purpose of the purchase? Well, again, to address the current needs of the city's recreation programs. One of the things I keep hearing over and over, it's a recurring thing that I hear from people in the, in the community, is we don't have enough fields. We don't have, we don't have the places for our kids to play ball, to play soccer, to play lacrosse, et cetera. I also hear that, you know, we can't get any tournaments here because all these other communities are grabbing up, you know, all the tournaments, and we don't have resources here to do that. We want to secure, we wanted to secure land for future quality-of-life programs and facilities, and looking at other future opportunities. Okay. Here's the piece of property we bought. Again, plus or minus 400 acres of land in the back part of Williamsburg. If you see here on the map, where Western Boulevard extends past Gun Branch Road, our property will begin at the end of that road. And you can see there, it's a large tract. It's divided by a wetland section, and you'll see here. And one of the advantages behind this property now is the fact that there is a permit that's valid until a date in the future. I think it's what, 2023 is when it expires. And those type of permits are very expensive to get across these wetlands. So what are we going to do with it? We know that you have to have rectangular fields for soccer, lacrosse, flag football, and other types of sporting, sporting events like that. Baseball, softball fields are another thing that we're short on. We have a growing populat, we have a growing population here, especially in the northwest corridor where this is located at. We have, I think, 700 houses, single-family dwellings that are planned right across the road, Gun Branch Road, over there behind or by the River Life Church. We also need trails, biking, fitness, challenge courses, and that sort of thing. The 400, you think about 400 acres, that's a lot of land. So we can do a lot of planning on what we want to do with this land. All right. This I put up here, this is an idea as far as a sports complex, where we can get everything kind of centralized in one area. You see there, and this is not necessarily something that we've done as a city adopting this, but this is kind of giving you a general idea of what my vision is, what I see us doing on this property. Now, I think that this, you see all the fields over here on the right. You see the little star there. It contains five different baseball or softball fields for little league or softball, et cetera. You have parking areas. You'll notice here. You're going to have to have plenty of parking, because people show up. We're going to have to have restroom facilities and that sort, that sort of thing, and at some point in time, we'll have to think about doing some type of concession operation there to service it. But this is just a general idea. Actually, this is another concept that I saw on the internet, and just to give you some ideas of what, what I would like to see. And I've been assured that it would probably fit on about 100 acres of land. So that's 100 out of the 400. Here's another view or concept of it. You can see there's room for expansion in there also. Looks good, not much. Yes, sir. Yeah? That's a dream. This is another, another layout type of view, which you can see. These are all ideas and concepts, where we, where we can go. Can you imagine? Now, we're going to be, you know, we're going to be able to serve all of our needs, recreational-wise, as far as fields are concerned, but also, we're going to be in a position where we can host tournaments, which is good for economic development. So let me go a little further. Again, this is what I'm, this is the kind of thing that I would love to see. And I'm sure a lot of you would, too. But again, what I hear from the community is they want fields. They want a sports complex, not a, you know, they want, they want a place for their kids to go and play, you know? All right. Some of the concepts for the future, you know, water park and splash pad, bicycle courses, and other, other uses of the land. Here's just an example of a water park that could fit in. So with the funding, $2.4 million, that's a lot of money. But we got it, we got a bargain on it. Tax value on the land is $2.6 billion. So we, we did pretty good for over 400 acres of land. I think Jerry figured it out. If you count all 400 acres of land, we got it for about $5,000 a piece acre.
Mayor, don't look to me. I don't do math.
Jerry did for us, but anyway. We know that we're about to sell some land in the commons to one place. It's in the budget, it's in the state budget. The governor, we're still waiting on that budget to be signed off on, but they, they have an option on this property right now for, from us. That's $1 million. So we're down to $1.4 million. We have fund balance that we can loan ourselves money from, on the condition that we pay ourselves back. As you can see, we can repay from the 4-cent fund over five years. But we can repay by selling some other commons areas and some other recreational areas that were dedicated for recreation that probably are not fitting within the scheme of what we want to do, you know, in the future. You know, I think we have other property in Williamsburg not adjoining this property, also in Carolina Forests and a few other. So as far as impacting the taxpayer, it's not going to require us to raise taxes to purchase this. That's a good thing. So what are we going to do? Committee, look at, you know, how are we going to come up with the ideas, or what are we going to do with this property? You know, first off, the mission should be, we should have some public input sessions. We need to know what our citizens want. We want to meet with our city advisory committees for input and meet with other governmental agencies for their input. Possibly prepare a couple of concept plans for presentation to the public and to the city council. This is what our committee would be doing, and recommend a plan for Phase 1, including an opinion of probable cost and a time schedule for construction. As far as the committee, we could do, there's some different options that we could do. We could do a subcommittee of three, three council members and some, and city staff. Or we could do a council subcommittee of three and one member from each city advisory committee. Other options, we can use the Recreation Advisory Committee. Fourth one here, we can hire a consultant to do a study, to give us some, to do a study of this and see what they recommend or could recommend to the council. And we could also go back to the city, county, city committee of two members each. Or there's others. Now, I think you passed around a paper beforehand. So as far as I'm concerned, recommend, I recommend option number one, and I'm going to tell you why, okay? The city council is elected to lead. We're the ones in charge. You know, we're the ones the public expects to be frugal and careful with their, their tax money. We know that this tax money is used, and there has to be accountability, and we know that council also has knowledge of city programs. As far as option one, funding will be needed in the future. And the key thing is, the citizens elected us, meaning you, to make these kind of decisions. So ultimately, that decision as to where we go is going to rest with the council. Now, one thing I will mention is, in a couple weeks, on the 16th of November, what I want you to do, I'll give you a homework assignment. Why don't you study and think of some ideas of how to put the committee together, how you want to put it together? Who do you think should be involved in this? And come back in a couple weeks, we come back in a couple weeks at the 16th meeting, and we'll talk about it. Does that sound agreeable with everybody? Just, just some proposals here to establish our committees in November, December of 2021. Get our public input sessions done by January or February. Advisory committees by February, March. Other governments, March and April. And draft concept plans in May through Ju, through July 2022, and submit a report to council. Now, this is your call. This is, you know, this is just my recommendation, how we should do it. Council public hearings on it would be in October, November, 2022 timeframe. Council adoption in November or December, and funding and development in FY24, '26. And again, this is what I keep hearing that people want. They want this type, this type of recreation facility in their city. And with that, I appreciate you listening to me, and I will take my seat back up there. So we have some One City Moment, Minute stuff here to...
How about you coming up and giving the One City Moment?
I'm going to, just on the fly, I'm going to ask Susan to come up and give the One City Moment, because what we're going to be doing is highlighting the Veterans Tribute Weekend, which she has organized. So you're on.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Good evening. We are very excited this weekend. We are doing the Veterans Family Event and the Veterans Family, well, the Veterans Tribute Weekend. So it's a weekend full of lots of activities. It's been a committee that several of us have been involved in, so I would be remiss not to mention Media Services, Kim in the media room in there, and then Susan Dozier, Teresa Beecham, several of you know them. And then, of course, myself and my staff have been working on the whole weekend. I'm sorry?
And the tourism development.
And, and the tourism development, absolutely. We appreciate your support, and we're hoping that this is going to be a fabulous event for the whole community and obviously for our veterans. So we're actually going to start with the Veterans Day Parade, and it is on Saturday morning. For those of you watching, we want everybody to show their support for all the folks in the parade at 10:00 a.m. along Western Boulevard. It's the same route as the Holiday Parade, so by all means, get along the side of Western and support all the folks that will be out there that morning. And then following the parade, we are going to be at the Commons at 11:00, from 11:00 to 3:00. We have lots of great activities planned, including touch a truck. We've got some neat trucks. You see a Jeep there. We have Mr. Hul coming and bringing some static displays. We have some other Jeeps coming on. We have some city vehicles, going to do a little touch a truck, just to show the citizens what it is that we do. We have some, obviously, we're good at the kids' activities, so we'll have the rock-climbing wall. We'll have all of those fun things for the kids to do. We have arts and crafts, the Arts Council is involved. We will also have some live music, and we are really excited to just showcase what this community has to offer and support our veterans and our families. In concurrence with that going on at the Commons, we also want to make sure that we showcase our beautiful memorials and the gardens down here in this area of town. So we'll be providing garden tours. You have to make a reservation. For those of you interested in watching, please go to our website, and you do have to sign up, but I'm sure there's plenty of slots out there, because we'll be offering on Saturday and Sunday. So from 11:00 to 2:00, guided tours will be available. We would love to obviously have everybody come and enjoy all components. So if you get to us on Saturday, please go to the Memorial Gardens on Sunday, or do all of it in one day. So we would love to have everybody participate. And then on the garden, we're going to have a really nice walk also. So hopefully, weather will hold out, if not on Saturday, then on Sunday, so people can also just enjoy the beautiful, the walk that we have there for the veterans and the beautiful grounds and all of the wonderful things that we can offer our citizens, our veterans, our families, so on and so forth. So I hope I didn't leave anything out, Dr. Woodruff, but we want everybody to come out and show their support. We're in a beautiful community, and that's the least we can do for veterans. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Since 1988, the council and I have been honored to host an outstanding veteran recognition ceremony in November centered around Veterans Day. The ceremony will be presented virtually again this year and will premiere on Veterans Day, November 11th, on G10 TV, as well as on the city's Facebook and YouTube channels. A link to the program will be available on our webpage at JacksonvilleNC.gov. The city council and I extend our congratulations to each of the 2021 outstanding veterans. We respect and honor you. For this Veterans Day, I want to leave you with a quote from Presidential Proclamation 3071 by Dwight D. Eisenhower on Veterans Day in 1954. thirty-seventy-one by Dwight D. Eisenhower on Veterans Day in nineteen fifty-four. "Let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores, to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us re-consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace, so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. Thank you, veterans, for your service and sacrifice." Do we have a motion to adjourn? Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, all...